Councilmember Jason H. Winston, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Amir Faroki, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Byron D. Amis, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Dozer, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, District Five.
Here.
Councilmember Alex Wan, District Six. Councilmember Howard Shook, District Seven. Councilmember Mary Norrie, District Eight. Councilmember Dustin Hills, District Nine. Councilmember Andrea Elboon, District Ten. Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet, District Eleven. Councilmember Antonio Lewis, District Twelve. Mayor, Mr. President Potem, we do have a quorum of members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up on our agenda is adoption of the Agenda-Entertain a Motion to Adopt. So, motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari, second by Councilwoman Dozier. We can take this item on unanimous consent of members present if there is no objection.
Unanimous consent is ten yeas, zero nays?
Ten yeas, zero nays, the agenda is adopted. Next up on the agenda is the invocation. Colleagues, we do not have someone to provide said invocation, so before we take a moment of silence, I wanted to see if anyone on the dais had anybody whose names they wanted to lift up. Councilmember Boone, followed by Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. We would like to send condolences and prayers to two families. The family of Civil Rights and Human Rights Leader Charles Person, who was the youngest living member of the original Freedom Fighters. To the family of the late Charles Person. And then to our Chief of Staff Santana Kempson Wright, who lost two members of her family suddenly. Dolores Hobson and Keith Hobson. Please keep her mother and their entire family in your prayers. The funeral services for the Hobsons will be at the West Hunter Street Baptist Church next Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. So a special thank you to Pastor Jackson at West Hunter Street Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Faroki.
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge, recognize the passing of my Chief of Staff's father, Dr. Bill Trippi, who passed away in Wisconsin, Illinois, a week ago. And Jay's been up there most of last month taking care of him, is back with us now, but I want to acknowledge his passing.
Thank you. Councilmember Bakhtiari.
Thank you. First, a positive thing, my mother-in-law rang the bell today and is officially a survivor of breast cancer in remission, so I wanted to give her a call, a shout-out. Also, I wanted to say Cecile Phillips, who passed away, who was the head of Planned Parenthood and somebody I was lucky enough to meet, lost a long-time battle with cancer. Again, Santana Kempson Wright losing her aunt and then her cousin eight hours later on Friday, keeping her in our prayers. And then finally, Cornelius Taylor. Last Thursday, I believe it was last Thursday, Cornelius was an unsheltered man who lived on Wheat Street, Old Wheat, in an encampment back there, and was run over and crushed during a sweep. It is not typical that someone speaks this much during this time, but I think it is important to name that Cornelius was not just an unsheltered person. To the press that might be in the room, he was a person. Start using his name. He's not an unsheltered man. Cornelius is only in his late 40s. I want to thank his family for being here, who we'll hear from today. But a couple of things, there has to be a change in how we handle homelessness. It is not working. It has not been working. Our pit count, last January, this council has still not received an update from Continuum of Care on the pit count, which tells us how many unsheltered people on the street. They're fighting us on summer pit counts, when people or more folks are on the street, we get a more accurate number. Continuum of Care should not be fighting council on a legislative priority to have our off-years be in the summer. That is a basic thing, and it is low cost. Not that ever human life should be equated to money. The COC received, oh, I should also say that it's supposed to be by HUD requirements, the numbers are supposed to be shared with us by May 10th. We didn't get the numbers until June. Still has not been presented to council. We still do not know what happened and why we got the data late, and we still haven't gotten a presentation, and there's supposed to be another pit count this month. The 2024 HUD Award gave them $14,500,000. They were awarded an additional $4.6 million by the mayor, and with construction included, that's $24 million. Where's the money going? So I would like, I'm thankful for our CDHS Chair, Councilmember Winston, who is going to allow, who's going to help with this, but Continuum of Care needs to come and present before council. We need to understand the process. That does not mean the investigation. You don't have to speak on that, but you sure can break down to us what happened and why, and who was on site, and who was responsible. And also, we will not allow an employee to be scapegoated. And also, we will not allow an employee to be scapegoated for this, we need to understand what happened. So, be calling for that, and I do have a paper today calling for a moratorium on all sweeps until we understand. Because you don't clean sweeps, you house them. I'm sorry, you don't clean, you don't sweep, you don't sweep encampments, you house them. And again, not that... And if there had been case managers on the ground to build relationships with people there, the same people and the case managers who deserved to be paid living wages, and we retained them, if we had had them, then Cornelius would have been housed. It shouldn't have taken a year, a year of outreach, and him not to be housed. And if anyone tells you he didn't want to leave, that has nothing to do with it, I don't care if Cornelius, I don't care if he was an addict, I don't care if he was struggling with addiction, everybody in this room is struggling with something. He deserved to be housed, housing is a human right, and because these pictures got confiscated, this is Cornelius Taylor. So, please keep all of them in your prayers, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you. The prayers to the family of Cornelius Tay-
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Lewis.
I would like to send condolences out to the family of Cornelius Taylor. I would like to send condolences out to the family of Kenneth Collier Jr. And I would also like to send condolences out to the family of my, my Chief of Staff, a advocate of myself, Tyrese Miller, who lost his grandfather this weekend. So, add him to your prayers, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, for those mentioned, and those in our hearts and on our minds, if you please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is proclamations, commendations, and other special awards, of which we have none, and so we will move at this moment, indeed, we will move at this moment into comments by members of the public. As a reminder, folks will have two minutes to speak unless time has been yielded to you, up for a total of 10 minutes. And the first three individuals on our list are Crystal Jeffrey, Carlton Hamm, and Gerard Jackson. So, Crystal Jeffrey. Thank you much. Gerard Jackson, or Jared Jackson?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gerard Jackson, and I'm a proud member of the City of Atlanta, uh, pardon, excuse me, that's what I just heard, I just heard it, it was so sad, it made me skip my voice, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry to happen to them. All right, my name is Gerard Jackson, and I'm a proud City of Atlanta employee. I want to take this opportunity to highlight the tireless efforts that City of Atlanta employees are doing during this hazardous time. Right now, watershed workers are working around the clock to ensure that essential services remain operational. Parks workers are out in full force, keeping the streets clean and safe despite the challenging conditions. Recreation staffs are out, recreation staff members are out managing warming shelters, leaving the safety of their own homes to ensure that the children and members of our community have a safe place to be in. Because of these critical efforts, many of our colleagues who normally here to discuss the ongoing issues with the OIG are unable to attend. However, I assure you that we remain steadfast in our commitment to address these issues. Our focus to it is to ensure that all City of Atlanta employees receive the support, transparency, and fairness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Duan Robinson, who thanks to yielded time will have eight minutes, followed by Mr. Robinson is George Pickney and Spencer Compton. Okay, in that case, Mr. Compton is not speaking, Mr. Robinson has 10 minutes, followed by George Pickney, and then Devin Franklin, who thanks to yielded time will have six minutes.
Yes, good afternoon, counsel. Um, so the OIG, can y'all put the time up there to say 10 minutes? Yes, counsel, the OIG has a duty to investigate fraud, waste, and abuse. So I want to speak about abuse. We have councilmember who just marched out, Liliana, abuse of power, being at a park late night without authority, saying that she was robbed when she wasn't, getting a black man fired, but she's here today for the family of Mr. Taylor, who justly here, but for the wrong reason. Feel no shame, Ms. Liliana's office was the one who asked the mayor's office to clear the encampment. I'm not going to stay here and let y'all be deceived, this is my damn city. And she's sitting here marching, and that lie that y'all saying she was getting hit for the last two months, that's a lie. Liliana Bakhtiari want to parade and take advantage of her being gay. She want to parade, take advantage of her being Palestinian, when it's all beneficial to her. It's a lie. She seem sane to me, but where she been the last two months? OIG office investigate where she been? Where's her doctor notice that she put herself in a mental institution? Are we going to allow councilmembers to lie and do that, and then parade down here with this black family, when she caused the black man to lose her job and didn't get him his job back? Nah, we ain't going to fall for that. Ain't got nothing to do with the Taylor family, what y'all going for. I sit out here and speak and feed homies for the last 20 years, so I understand what y'all go for, but let this be known, I was in the hallway last week, and I don't speak and take off for nobody. Courtney English was supposed to have a meeting, I was trying to ask him something. He got that phone call that a young man just lost his life. Me being, knows and being who I am, I drove out there to that encampment, and seen the city workers in tears of what happened out there. Man, this was an honest mistake, and I'm not saying the family don't deserve no, we're not saying that. Hold on, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not here for the, hey, Tim, don't do that. Don't, I'm not saying that. Ain't nobody mocking no issue up, don't play with me like that, because I don't play with y'all. Where y'all out here with shit really be going on? So don't give me that, because I'm the wrong one for that. Ain't no man, don't give me that.
Dr. Robinson, Dr. Robinson, please.
Listen, don't give me that, because I'm the wrong one for that.
Your comments towards council.
I don't care about going the right street for it, now play with it. Who y'all think y'all playing with for that? Stop coming down to City Hall, playing the game with the race card and the gay card. Y'all gonna stop that in 25, because you don't care about black folk for real, for real. So start acting like you do. We don't go, and I'm one who usually down for the fight, but I have also been used for misinformation plenty of times. We come down here and we fight and we march up, when we don't have a simple conversation with those that can help. We always going to be at the back end when we come down to fight first, and when we don't have conversations. I called the mayor's office that day and said, hey, man, what is going to happen? They asked me that I know the family, because I'd be out, we'd be doing stuff with the homeless. I didn't know the Taylor family, and I said, no, I don't know the Taylor family. But did you know, when I made a comment on social media, eight lawyers hit me back and said, do you know the family? Everybody be wanting the money grab. They don't give a damn about Mr. Taylor, they be wanting the money grab. But what I can say is, when I asked Mr. English that day after we left the scene, this is their, this what they want their legacy to be, the youth and the affordable housing and dealing with the homeless. So I think that, instead of having all these lawyers trying to fight and come up with something, let's have a conversation and see how can we help this family. And if we've had that conversation and they ignored the family, then we fight. But I think that we can get somewhere if we have a conversation and say, hey, listen, man, we understand it was a mistake, or whatever, where do we go from here? And then if we don't get the answers, then we come down here. But to allow a city councilman leading this charge, who got a black man fired, lying? I don't think y'all really understand how many black folk have lost their lives, burned, and killed, in jail, because people lying, saying that a black man done something to them, and he didn't do it to them. But you got that same councilmember leading these efforts, and then when the heat got on her, she hid. And then even more worse, went to a school, then yelled at a black girl who asked her where she get the black man his job back, cursed the little girl out. This is the councilmember that did this. And y'all want to let her lead these efforts, playing games, trying to get her name back intact, not on my watch. It suits her well to play gay when it's a gay issue. It suits her, well, she told a white man in this audience, I'm not one of them white women, so don't play with me that way. So what do you want to be? But she want to get y'all down here to fight for this cause to make her look good, and y'all, and you think I'm going to allow that? Man, is you crazy? Not on my watch, not in my city. And we not going to continue to allow that to happen, and I don't care who like it and don't like it. Man, we got to start playing games, man. We got somebody that took office, got rid of all black folks day one. D E I gone, federal black employees gone. We can't afford to play that city, I mean, them games in Atlanta. We've been divided so much, we can't play that game no more, man. We got to start helping folks for real in this city, man. Y'all be quick to quote King and Maynard, but who living it? Who passed the legislation like they did? Who standing up for the people like they did, in this city? We can't afford to play that game no more. I'm a Delta, I'm a AKA, I'm a Kappa, I'm a Omega, hey, man, that shit over with, man. We in trouble. No, y'all seen what's going on in DC. We in trouble, Marcy, and we can't afford to play that no more in Atlanta. Councilman Barnes, thank you for coming. And we can't afford to play these games no more. I know you're not going to go back and look at it, but we talking about your fellow councilmember, Liliana Bakhtiari, leading this effort down here with these people, using this family and the opportunity to make her name look good again, when it's mud, and it's going to stay mud. In a park, late at night, ain't nobody doing nothing in a park unless you drinking and getting high, first of all. Ain't nobody at no park that late at night, not no woman, because if you scared, you wouldn't be at the park after hours, if you scared, first of all. And then if you scared, you ain't calling burning tow cars, you calling 911, if you're really scared. But why is you at a park late night? I can't be there late night, you can't be there late night if you ain't a councilman. Huh? Can you do that? Can't, nobody do that, but a councilmember can do that. That's abuse of power, OIG, look into that. And we just got to stop playing these games, man. It's been going on for far too long, and we got to stop it, man. We all know about the 1904 race wars, race riots right here in Atlanta. We know what happened to civil rights. All that's been taken away from the federal level, but we got to say so on the city side, man. And we got to be more conscious about helping our people, and I'm not saying there's only black people. But if you black, you should care about black people. But if you're a human, you should care about gay, straight, black, white, Asian, all that. All that benefited from the civil rights bill that black folks fought and marched and died for. Everybody benefited from those benefits, poor, white, gay, black, Jewish, everybody. Let it be known, the KKK didn't like Mexicans, they didn't like Jews, no, I'm saying, they didn't like homosexuals, they didn't like blacks. Now that law's passed, everybody going on about their merry way, but they still treating the poor black man the same that they did in the 60s. Everybody got their laws passed and going about their merry way except for the black man. And that shouldn't be the case in the City of Atlanta in 2025. That should not be the case. And we have to do better, and we got to do better. Thank you.
Next up is Devin Franklin, who will have, thanks to yielded time, six minutes, followed by Gina Pagnato with four minutes, and Jonathan Holley. Mr. Franklin.
Good afternoon, Councilpersons.
Afternoon.
Name is Devin Franklin, I am Senior Movement Policy Counsel at the Southern Center for Human Rights. I am here today to offer comment as to the pending legislation related to the reformation of the Office of the Inspector General. However, first, I would like to take the opportunity to offer my condolences to the Taylor family and to those who are here in support of the Taylor family. I can't tell you how deeply disturbed I was to learn of the way that Mr. Taylor was killed, knowing that the presence of the college football national championship in our city, at that same time, our city's history with attempting to hide its homelessness, when we have national eyes on it. I'm very disturbed with the role that I believe that may have played. But as it pertains to the issue as to why I'm here, I want to draw your attention to at least three paragraphs that are of particular concern to my colleagues and I at the Southern Center as pertains to this legislation. The first that I would draw your attention to, and I'm also including some packets for you all, if you could pass those around, pertains to Section 8101B, which seeks to limit the investigative authority of the OIG to allegations of waste, fraud, abuse, and corruption by including new restrictive language that prohibits the OIG from conducting criminal investigations, which, from a purely a public interest perspective, is odd because it implicitly suggests that there is criminal activity ongoing, that those who offer the language would rather let be ignored than be explored by someone who, over whom they have no influence or authority. But more importantly, from a practical perspective, a technical perspective, the language of this paragraph is ambiguous and fails to provide a definition of criminal investigation. And such ambiguity leads to unnecessary complication and effectively kneecaps the OIG from pursuing the waste, fraud, abuse, and corruption that the same paragraph authorizes them to investigate, because many of those actions are also criminal in nature, as demonstrated by the numerous federal indictments for former city employees whose actions inspired the original legislation that created the OIG. Secondly, regarding 808101E1, addressing access to records and property, the suggested amended language requiring that the OIG make a request to the city employee to voluntarily surrender the city-owned property, and that such request, quote-unquote, "detail the reason for the investigation and cite any relevant laws, regulations, or policies." And further, offers that the OIG can only seek subpoena compelling the turn, the turning over of their property if the employee refuses to voluntarily surrender this property. This language unnecessarily complicates convolutes and delays meaningful investigation into actions of potential harm to the city. It poses a very obvious obstruction to unearthing fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption, and actually invites alterations, multiplication, deletion, and destruction of evidence. To be clear, concern about actions that persons being investigated tampering with evidence is not some fantastical, whimsical, hypothetical. I remind you all that my organization has recently been on the doorsteps of an open records lawsuit with the City of Atlanta, and we are aware that alerts of a pending inquiry into information are sometimes related to targets. What do you all think would be response by targets if they know the nature of the investigation by the OIG? All of that being said, in a city that has created the OIG for very specific historical reasons, citation to the authority of the Office of the Inspector General should be sufficient. Because if a city employee or contractor is not engaged in fraud, waste, abuse, or corruption, there is no single justification to delay the surrender of city-owned property. My colleagues and I have also, also have great issue with Section 8101E7B, which is entirely newly constructed language offered with regards to the rights and responsibilities of the OIG must convey to employees when interacting with them. This section seeks to make any statement made by an employee during the course of an investigation, quote, "a compelled statement," with the inference that such categorization as a compelled statement prevents the usage of information in the future by prosecutors or police. As a 12-year veteran of Atlanta's Fulton County Public Defender's Office, one who has tried dozens of cases- one who has tried dozens of cases to trial and earn many not guilty's, let me be abundantly clear to you all and to every civil Atlanta employee who is in this room and who has been misled and told that the language in this paragraph is some sort of protection or indication of workers' rights. Any assertion that those statements cannot be used to your detriment is false. Patently false. The information learned from that statement that this legislation is now, that this legislation proposes to force you to make can still be used against you. It only protects the actual verbatim statement from being used. These issues are only three of the dozens that my colleagues and I have with this legislation. My team and I continue to offer our time and our expertise in fixing the many issues with this legislation. You all have my contact number. I look forward to the planned work session on this legislation. And I look forward to hearing from you all very soon.
Thank you. Next up is Gina Pagnata, who has four minutes, followed by Jonathan Holley and Kat Leatherwood. Ms. Pagnata.
Happy New Year. Hadn't seen you all in a while. I'm Gina Pagnata. I'm president of Pace Union City Employees Professional Association of City Employees, and I'm also Vice President of NAGE. First of all, it just breaks my heart. I wish I had more time, but it's a lot. And I wrote some notes. And then after hearing this gentleman from OIG speak, it kind of upset me a little bit. And you all that know me, know I talk from my heart and my soul. And I always go off the script. First, I would like to say our condolences to the Taylor family. It really, really... I hate to come up here and speak because OIG probably and the, and the city is investigating that tragic situation. However, I have to go by, let me say what I'm gonna say, and then let me say what's the real deal. Now, I'm not even gonna read this, because I gotta say it out of heart. Let me say this. I was with Felicia Moore. You all are aware of Felicia Moore. And this union had actually met with her to say, "We need something," back in the day, under certain administration that wasn't doing right. We saw a lot of corruption. We saw a lot of stuff, and our employees were being held accountable when they wasn't the ones. And we came up with an idea, what she called the OIG. So I'm very well familiar what the OIG is supposed to stand for. But somehow, they've gotten out of hand. I've met personally with the leader of OIG some months ago, last year. I saw one of the first cases that they had. I had the opportunity to read it because it was one of our members that we did not know was being investigated till after the fact. Some of the statements in that OIG report was false. Let me say that again. It was false. And I had the rep, I had the documentation and asked, "Why did you not make this statement exactly as that employee said that it was supposed to be?" They said they didn't feel that it was necessary. How do you not feel something is necessary or is not necessary when you're doing an investigation? I'm not saying that that entity is not needed. Any entity that's looking for waste and fraud is needed. My question is, who's governing that entity? Who picked the governing board for that entity? When you're calling one of our members of these city employees according to our MOU, signed by the mayor, that is also quantified in the code by you council, every employee has the right to have union representation or any representation on the onset of an administrative discipline. Investigations all the way. And when it becomes criminal, they have the right to attain their private attorney. Even when you getting arrested, you have the right to remain silent. Y'all remember that? Till you get an attorney. But when you go and pull a city employee to just do an administrative, whether they're accused or the witness, and tell them they cannot have representation, you tell me what's fair. That is not fair. That is my only plight against the OIG. Quit going to their homes. Quit going and sending police to their homes to pick up phones. They're not criminals. And quit making them feel scared and interrogated that they cannot speak to their union representative or even their attorney. That has to stop. And I've asked this, and someone told me, yes, they have rights to representation, but I've got seven cases that we didn't know about until after the fact. And it's more. Let this protocol of DHR, labor relations, the city administration, this union, and other unions that have the right to represent their members when they are accused it for something that they may or may not have done. And then let the city's criminal justice system do their job. Thank you.
I am remiss in not acknowledging the arrival of councilmembers Michael Jambon, Howard Shook, and Mary Norwood at various points over the last few minutes. Next speaker is Jonathan Holley, followed by Kat Leatherwood and Michael Jones, who thanks to yielded time will have four minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jonathan Holley. I'm a resident of Old Fourth Ward. That's you, Jason. Hello, I hope you're paying attention. Cornelius was my neighbor. And as far as we can tell, his death was an accident, but that does not mean no one is responsible. I'm here to tell you that you are responsible. You may not have driven the bulldozer, but you oversaw the system of interweaving incompetence and recklessness and open disregard for human life and dignity that ended his life prematurely. It is on you. It is your job to fix this. And I will tell you how. The first thing I need to see is some shame. Condolences, while they are appreciated, are not enough. You should be hanging your heads. Mr. Taylor's mother is here with a letter for the mayor, and she was not allowed to deliver it for security concerns. She's a little old woman. What is the security concern? That is absurd. It's shameful. After shame, I need to see contrition. That's a big word. Contrition means repentance. I need to see each of you tell your voters that you are going to turn this around. You are not going to let this happen again because it's unacceptable. Cornelius, when he was alive, was an unhoused man living on the streets of Atlanta. That alone, in my view, is an affront to human decency. You have $11 billion at your disposal. What is wrong with you? There's 3,000 people living on the street, on our last numbers. Projects like The Melody are very nice. They house 40 people at a time. You need 600 of those to really address the problem. Which leads me to action. After shame, after contrition, I want to see action. Housing first has been proven in many cities to be an extremely effective way to deal with this problem. Salt Lake City reduced its homelessness by 70% in the mid-2010s with housing first. New Orleans has made homeless veterans a thing of the past. There are no homeless veterans in the city of New Orleans. We're gonna let the Mormons beat us at this? Come on, that's insane. Housing first is not a complete system. It's just the first step. That's why the word "first" is in there. You house them, and then you help them further. But you get them off the streets first. That's how you fix it. It is not going to be easy, but it is going to be very simple. It's just money and time intensive, but you can do it. And I will even give you the first step. The vacant lot right next to the site of Cornelius's murder is unused. It is about six or seven acres of land, which used to have an affordable housing unit called the Garden, the, excuse me, the Wheat Street Garden Apartments. It stood there until the 2010. It was demolished and replaced by an urban farm. And that urban farm was dismantled in 2016. The land has sat empty for nine years. It is owned by the Wheat Street Baptist Church. You can go to them, and you can buy that land, or you can lease it from them. You need to talk to Reverend Dr. William J. Smith Jr. or Mr. Holmes, who oversees the nonprofit who controls the land. Either one of them. I'm sure that you have better resources than I do for contacting them. You can build a housing unit there. The foundations are still there. You can go and look at them. The concrete pads are still visible. You can build a housing unit there, and that is a good start. Then you have to build more housing. This is a ridiculous situation. It should never have been allowed to happen. I will remind you all of something you all already know. This is an election year. So in addition to doing the right thing, it's also the politically expedient thing to get on this problem. You can consider this comment a performance review. Your jobs are at stake. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Kat, Kat Leatherwood, followed by Michael Jones, who thanks to yielded time has four minutes, and then Jay Wesley Day with two minutes. So Kat Leatherwood, two minutes.
Hi, I'm Kat Leatherwood. I live in East Atlanta. And I've had the privilege of getting to work with a lot of these folks, helping our neighbors who are unhoused. And last Thursday, I went to Old Wheat Street, where a man named Cornelius Taylor, one of our neighbors, was murdered. He did not have an address, but he was our neighbor. He should have been protected by the councilmen responsible for that district and the mayor's office. Instead, we here in town halls about how the homeless make residents, mind you, they live here too, feel uncomfortable and unsafe. But we don't hold town halls at the Old Wheat Street encampment. We don't ask our unhoused neighbors how they feel when they are treated with outright hostility or even worse indifference by their neighbors. It makes me think of Everest and those who climb it. Those who ascend to the peaks are hailed as heroes. We ignore the money it costs, the guides and infrastructure needed to reach the top. These people are hailed as exceptional individuals. Those who perish are demoted to markers along the path and given nicknames like "green boots." They are dehumanized because the truth is harder than anything else. All the money, infrastructure, and knowledge isn't enough. It is often the right conditions or luck that gets us where we are. Cornelius Taylor isn't a pair of boots attached to a skeleton that dresses the landscape. He was a person. He was loved. He had dreams, and his death is a death of potential to grow. You are not smarter. You are not more determined or stronger than him or any of our unhoused neighbors. The conditions were laid out for you to be where you are. My parent was homeless at one point and has stressed this to me time and time again, that we are where we are because of certain circumstances. We are not special. You are entrusted with our tax dollars, and you have failed to build affordable housing. You have failed to increase wages. You have failed to curb rising rents, provide safe housing for those who are unhoused, or safety from the city and police for those who do not have it.
Ms. Leatherwood, your time has expired.
Less sweeps, more housing.
Thank you. Next up, due to yielded time, is Michael Jones with four minutes, followed by, due to yielded time, Jay Wesley Day for four minutes, followed by Andrew Cohen. Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Michael Jones. I'm an employee of the city of Atlanta for 20-something years. 22 years, to be exact. I've personally, along with my coworkers, back in March, started coming down, talking to the Transportation Committee, Councilman Lewis, Councilwoman Overstreet, Councilman Juan, Councilman Amos, Faroki. Brought a lot of problems and issues to you guys. Some of them got band-aided. None of them really got fixed. Some of them were swept under the rug. We keep trying to make a difference, and it's not until we spoke with the OIG, Office of Inspector General, things started to move along. And unlike one of the other speakers up here, we had union reps in there with us. We were speaking to them. Things are starting to be investigated, starting to be changing, as they should be. It seems like the OIG is getting a bad rap. They're taking cell phones, they're doing that. Never that I'm aware of have they taken anybody's personal cellphone. However, us employees at the Department of Aviation have been told on multiple occasions that if we use our personal cell phones for something as minuscule as calling into work, it is now, it can now be confiscated and/or through open records, can be taken from us by Human Resources, by the city of Atlanta. Now, if the city of Atlanta Human Resources could do that, but the OIG is catching flak for never have doing it. I, I don't get it, right? That don't make a whole lot of sense to me. Why would you take a, an office, such as the Inspector General, and take away their power? Why not sit down and communicate with them and see if you can't work it out first? Versus having a task force to go in and say, "Wait, wait, we're gonna restrict you from doing this, that, and the other." You know, me as an employee, I feel that they're, they're, they're helping us. They're protecting us in some form or fashion. They're helping us with retaliation. I was told July 23rd, 2024, July 6th, 2024, when I got back after being unjustly terminated for five years, that there would be no retaliation. None. I'm here today on administrative leave for the second time in six months. And you're telling me I'm not being retaliated against? The only person that's helping is the OIG's department. They're the only people that call. "Hey, how you doing? What's going on? We're investigating, let's do this." Retaliation is not allowed in the city of Atlanta. It was told to me. Still happening today. The second time. I've been out there 22 years, Department of Aviation. Never got written up. Been written up five times in the last six months. Put on administrative, administrative leave twice in the last six months. OIG is the only one doing investigation. Now y'all want to take away, or they're looking to take away some of their power to do these investigations. Now, like I say, I know for a fact they've never taken anybody's cellphone. The only person I've had threatened to take away our cell phones was Human Resources here with the city of Atlanta. I mean, if you, we don't really have, you can't give everybody a city cellphone, right? But if you have a city cellphone or a computer, they can obviously take it, and for good reason. If you're doing unjust stuff, the only, the only reason to me you would take away power from these, from this department is that you had something to hide yourself. If you ain't got nothing to hide, don't take away the power. Let them do their investigation. Let us, you know, stop the waste, stop the fraud, stop the mismanagement of funds that I have spoken on to the Transportation Committee. Nothing's being done about it. They put a few Band-Aids on it, make it look good, but nothing's being done about it. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Next on our list is Jay Wes-
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Jones, you said my name, so I want to make sure I was able to respond to this. And I had a question as well. And I remember you coming down. I remember you being a leader.
Yes, sir.
You came down. I've talked to some former employees. They remember five years ago when you got fired.
Yes, sir.
I mean, not when, whatever happened.
Justly terminated.
And when you came back. So to even see your voice now and to still see it, I understand fully. But my, my question, because I want to make sure I heard you correctly. You went to, we, we partner you typically with HR. And when, when you were coming out here, every time we were partnering with HR, you saying you got movement for the first time when you went to OIG?
Correct.
And so when you were working with HR, did you see any movement?
No. I have, matter of fact, I have agreements in, I just talked to her. Kristi Johnson's office, O-LR Group. Been there since December 9th. I had to go up there and ask her, you know, "Where's my agreements? You know, what's the findings on it?" Nothing's been found, like, nothing's been done.
And, and you were threatened by HR to take your phone?
Now, they had a meeting with us at the Department of Aviation. Candace Coles, Kristi Johnson, they would all come down, they would talk. And in these meetings, they told us that your personal cellphone is, is, is subject to open records if you do anything for the city with it.
I was just making sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jay Wesley Day, who has four minutes, followed by Andrew Cohen with two minutes, and Pastor James Davenport, who thanks to yielded time will have six minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Wesley Day. I want to let the OIG department know if they're here, that I stand with them. I stand with Ms. Frost, who lost her job. And I stand with the Taylor family. Anything I can do for you all, please let me know. White people take care of their own. Look at Donald Trump, partnering 100-something people for the J6. However, back here in a city that is too busy to hate, no one cares about the injustices that continuously occurs, especially when it's one of our own. See, I was brutally beaten into a coma at the joystick game bar in 2018. I was on life support, fighting for my life. My mom didn't even know where I was on Thanksgiving 2018. Here we are going on seven years, and no one has been prosecuted. When they are captured on my cellphone footage, the city cameras, the, the cameras of the nightclub, When they are captured on my cellphone footage, the city cameras, the, the cameras of the nightclub, they've yet to be prosecuted. Yes, two have been indicted, but they've yet to be prosecuted. What you all should take this as and try to partner with your other justice systems is how does this impact the city? If it takes this long to get justice, perhaps this is why people take matters into their own hands. Because right now, I feel like I should have took in my Glock and handled and self-defended myself. I feel like I should have fought back. But instead, I'm waiting on seven years for justice. The most reasonable person wouldn't feel that they can wait that long for justice. Do you think Mary Norwood would have let one of her own get beaten and then get charged with a felony when the white man is on camera doing nothing, just filming his assailants? I doubt Ms. Mary Norwood would let one of her citizens go down and buckhead that way. The same with Dustin Hillis, the same with Amir Faroki. But it's only our black leaders who turn a blind eye, who don't want to assist. I thank you, Mr. Julian Byrne. You've the only one that has had balls, backbone, to show me some type of love and support. Because power and love has the face of Keith Gammage. For those who don't know Keith Gammage, he's the Solicitor General. I call him the mini Funny Willis. Funny Willis handles felonies. Keith Gammage handles all misdemeanors. See, Keith Gammage in two thousand eighteen, although I had my assailants on camera capturing them calling me homophobic slurs and epithets and telling me I suck dick, it's all on camera. Keith Gammage charged me with the fray. Some of you probably never heard of it before. It's like a disorderly conduct. But then Keith Gammage took that afray charge and upgraded it to a felony. Now, some are asking, did I have an attorney? I paid five thousand dollars to Attorney Gerald Griggs, who's also president of the NAACP, thinking that that was going to help me. I only found out Greg, Gerald Griggs, is a media whore. It did me no justice because he didn't come tell me that I had a felony. Keith Gammage didn't come tell me I had a felony. Guess who came and told me I had a felony? Delta Airlines, my employer. When I went to my then-councilman Byron Amos and asked for help, I emailed, I called, I ran into him in the hallway, shook his hand and asked to meet with him, nothing. I implore my black leaders to stand up and support and give a little Donald Trumping.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Next up is Andrew Cohen, followed by Pastor James Davenport, who will have six minutes, and Andreen Kong. Forgive me if I mispronounced your name, also with six minutes.
Excuse me, sir. I want to speak.
I apologize, I didn't see your name.
No problem. You know, normally I don't address when this gentleman comes to address us because he's, he's exercising his right to do so. This is a new year, so, but we must tell the truth. You are correct. We have spoke several times about this that you have been coming to speak to me about for over a year and a half. And I said at that time, there was no path forward in what I could do to help you with county issues. But on other issues you have brought to me, in which I would not say where they are because it is your personal business, I have made phone calls. We have emailed, we have talked, and we got those issues resolved. But on this one particular issue, we cannot see eye to eye. On this one particular issue, you come down here and continuously tell people, I'm not responsive, I have not talked to you, and I will not work with you. You need to tell the truth and say, we have spoke about this. Hold on, I did not interrupt you. We have spoke about this and I said I saw no path forward. Whenever you're able to bring the City of Atlanta a path forward in addressing county issues, then we can talk. Only thing I ask is for you to continuously to tell the truth and stop carefully creating, because I don't want to call you a liar, but you skirt that path every time you come to that mic. Speak the truth, that's all I ask. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cohen.
I will say that you are a liar. Show me the proof where you've spoken to me or met with me. When I leave this meeting today, as I have before, I will send all of you all the emails that requesting to meet with my then-councilman for several years.
Mr. Cohen.
And you will never see a trail back on that email. Where he's ever responded back to me.
Mr. Cohen.
You are a liar!
Mr. Cohen.
And I say it to your face, and if I see you in the streets, I'll say it to your face.
Mr. Cohen.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Cohen. I am a resident and a homeowner in the City of Atlanta. I also serve on the governing board of the Office of the Inspector General and the Ethics Office for the City of Atlanta. I'm Chair of the Department of Philosophy at Georgia State University, where I also serve as Director of Research for the Gene Beer Bluenfeld Center for Ethics. I speak today on my own behalf. I am the Board Rep of the seven major local universities and colleges. The leaders of those institutions have honored me by appointing me to serve in this oversight role. In my short tenure on the governing board, I've seen dedicated public servants and city officials do their best to ensure the city administration is governing fairly, transparently and efficiently. Now, I see this a proposal under consideration. It would change some of what the OIG must, must not, and may do, and it would eliminate various board positions, including the one I currently fill. I must be candid here, I don't understand what's going on. That's not good. It's not good because if anyone should be able to understand what's going on, it should be somebody like me who's on the inside. I don't know what version of legislative drafts it's up to with the precise changes on offer. Some versions I've seen have the mayor's office appointing their own reps on the boards who were charged with overseeing the very people, such as the OIG, who were there to investigate allegations of waste, fraud and abuse in the city. To me, without fully appreciating what's going on, that just looks like self-dealing. And then we see proposals to eliminate appointees from the League of Women Voters in the seven major universities and colleges. These changes don't make sense for a public who wants a fair and transparent government administration. We're all trying to do right by the city. The point of the governing board is to ensure that key local stakeholders have seats at the table of government oversight. These seats should be filled by those key community stakeholders. That helps ensure government oversight, it helps ensure accountability, it helps foster trust. The way to do that is not to make the OIG's job harder. The way to do that is not to cut back on community representation, as many current proposals do. Thank you for your consideration.
Next up, James Davenport with six minutes, followed by Andreen Kong with, for six minutes, followed by John Stop for two.
Very much. Happy New Year, everybody. I am James Davenport, President and Founder of the Hittin' Martin Health Foundation. I've asked you all for a lot, but it's really not. Normally, I'm asking you to provide live fries for seniors. Councilman Byrne, I know I'd be saying, provide free live fries, but I'm not stupid enough to know that you can't afford that. Do something. Let me get to why I'm here. Several years ago, I was told that there was homeless students at Booker T. Washington High School, my alma mater. I took it upon myself, I walked along Luther King Drive from White House Drive to Thurmond Street. I knocked on every merchant's door. I did not miss one and just in one day raised a thousand dollars. I've had the opportunity to witness a young girl after school hours laying down asleep at a MARTA train station. I have several times, I ain't gonna say that. It, it bothers me. And now, more so than any, it bothers me that you are the ones who are not new. Shut down Peach Street Pine Building. Shut it down. Homeless people at least have a safe haven to go to in the evening. If some of you would get out of your cars, walk downtown, you, you, you'll just experience the reek of urine all up and down Peach Street. I don't care what side you walk on, but I can tell none of you have actually experienced this. I dare you to go out and see what's going on. Now I get a phone call this past week. Ron Shakir called me. Ain't that cool, man? Have you heard? No, I hadn't heard. I had not heard that Mr. Taylor had been run over by a street sweeper. Ain't no sense in sugarcoating it? The mayor sit up and said he been tossing and turning since this situation. Mayor Dickens, you were one of the persons who actually agreed to shut down Peach Street Pine Building. All of a sudden, I'm seeing in the news that you all are twenty-two million dollars in debt and you just put a down payment on what we all call Cop City. Are you serious? Are you serious? A hundred eighty million dollars for a facility that you gonna be paying for, for the next fifty years? The governor have blocks up under, every overpass on the west side. This man was run over by a street sweeper because you all were too ashamed for that area for people to see on Dr. King's Day. Have mercy, you gotta be kidding me. Run over by a street sweeper? And I don't care who you try to convince, no way in the world you gonna tell me somebody actually checked those tents before they started rolling? You can't tell, you can't convince me. One of my uncles always said, well, pee on my head and tell me it's raining. You cannot do that. How can you? How can you? How can you? Nobody, I haven't heard, well, Ms. Bakhtiari just mentioned today, but it's been on the news. A street sweeper, y'all? You all have seen what those machines can do? It's more than sad. Y'all said the city too busy to hate. Y'all gotta be kidding? And, and I can, I can almost commend you because this is the tamest I've seen you all since I've been coming down here, since Felicia Moore lived. Normally, you all have sidebars, you're walking around disrespecting people. I can remember one of the last times I was here, Reverend Johnson, who actually ministers to the homeless right downtown, receiving accommodation from the President of the United States. You all did not hear a word that man said because you were busy walking around and talking. From the work that he does, and then how, all of a sudden, the Taylor family is grieving and you have a, you have a mayor who would not even come out and confront this family. It's a damn shame.
Next speaker, Andreen Kong, who, due to yielded time, will have six minutes, followed by John Stop, and Jawahir Sharwani.
Okay, I'm a little nervous, so.
That's okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Andreen Kong and I am here to address an urgent matter regarding my housing situation at Marshawn managed by Gray Star. First, I want to express my deep gratitude to Councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari and her counterpart Nick Capone and this council for your support when I last came before you in September. Your intervention provided my family the stability we desperately needed, allowing us to remain housed and focused on moving forward. Today, I find myself back before you because my family's stability is once again at risk due to actions taken by property management, which participates in the Invest Atlanta Workforce Housing Program. On November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, a kitchen fire broke out in my unit due to electrical issues. The fire not only damaged my home, but also left me with injuries to my hands and leg, which prevented me from working a critical event that would have allowed me to pay December's rent. To make matters worse, the fire extinguisher in my building was empty and inoperable, leaving me to fight the fire alone until my neighbors came to assist. My children and I were not even home when this incident occurred. Since then, I have done everything within my power to resolve these issues, but the property management's retaliatory actions, including rejecting my rent payment, raising my rent beyond the council negotiated rate and filing for eviction, have placed me in an untenable position. Additionally, despite their promises to address the issues, I took, it took them nearly a month to replace the empty fire extinguisher. And they have yet, they have yet to complete necessary repairs to the kitchen or provide documentation confirming the electrical system's safety. As a single mother of two young children, actually a single parent, this situation has taken tremendous, a tremendous emotional toll on me. I have been doing everything I can to ensure, I mean, to make sure that my children and I do not slip through the cracks of this system. Since my layoff in October twenty-three, I have relied solely on my work as an entrepreneur. The council's intervention last fall, including lowered rental rate, was instrumental in helping me regain my footing. I took that opportunity seriously and worked hard to build a foundation for my family's future. I want to highlight that I was a part of the Workforce Housing Program in partnership with Invest Atlanta, and I made every effort to meet the, uh, meet the expectations set by that program. However, despite my efforts, Gray Star's Regional Manager for Marshawn, Chrissy Condon, sentingly informed me that I would be denied recertification. This came after my rate was honored for the month of October and November following the passing of the former property manager, Michael Warner, who had shown me consistent support throughout two thousand twenty-four until his untimely death in October. These decisions appear retaliatory and undermine the purpose of the Workforce Housing Program, which provides stability for families like mine. I'm here today because I cannot afford the luxury of waiting for an answer from housing assistance or navigating the system that might not respond in time. My children and I, my children are in my full possession and custody and I will not stand by their, by while their stability and safety are threatened. I would hope that the City of Atlanta will not stand by as a single mother, actually a single parent, is unjustly put out with her two children after all the assistance and work that has been done to make progress. Furthermore, Gray Star has failed to provide proper documentation throughout this process. I have yet to receive any, any formal notice of termination of my lease, documentation regarding the safety of the electrical system or confirmation that the kitchen damages would be repaired. Their actions have left my family in an unstable, in unstable conditions, which should not be tolerated. I'm asking for the council's intervention to ensure that this eviction is dismissed based on the retaliatory actions taken by property management, mandate immediate repairs to the electrical damage caused by the fire to ensure my home is safe and my children and me, hold the property management accountable for their refusal to honor the agreed-upon rental rate and their rejection of my full payment and their failure to provide documentation regarding lease termination, electrical safety and kitchen repairs. Provide urgent solutions to prevent my family from falling through the cracks of a system that should protect us. My family's livelihood and stability are at stake and I come, I came to you in September because I believed in your ability to help and you exceeded my expectations and I'm grateful for that. I am here again because I believe that your intervention can make a difference between progress and devastation for my children and me. I respectfully ask for your continued support and action to ensure that we remain housed and can continue to build a future, a better future. Thank you for your time and attention and commitment to the residents of Atlanta and I'm happy to provide additional documentation and answer any questions that you may have. Samuel and Bella, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Do you have anything you want to say, sweetie? Yeah, come here. You got thirty seconds.
Go ahead, baby. Okay. Well, I think you guys get the point and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
I hope this hears, this falls, this doesn't fall on deaf ears and it falls on people who will make a difference. And my heart goes out to the Taylor family.
Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Bakhtiari has a quick comment.
Ms. Kong, before you go, how much has your rent been raised since you moved in? What, three years ago? A little less than three years?
Yes. The rate was negotiated down to fifteen fifty-four and when I tried to pay everything that was on the eviction notice, it was almost at twenty-nine hundred.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. The reason I asked, and so people know, I met Ms. Kong at the ribbon cutting for this, where they had her as a guest speaker for how this, how impactful in a positive way this apartment complex was for her. And now she's being, we've been fighting this eviction now for almost a year. I wanted to cite that because Ms. Kong is an extraordinary mother. I've gotten to know, I know, I still, I still, I still owe you a grindhouse state, we're gonna do it, but I, you're an extraordinary mom. You have done everything we've asked and beyond, you have been so kind, you have every reason to be resentful and upset, and you've led with such kindness and love, and I know how much you love your kids.
Thank you. I'm very grateful, and thank you.
I'm very grateful for you, and I'm sorry. So we are going to, I'm gonna give the county a call today because they can help investigate. We are going to get you, uh, representation, we are gonna figure it out. Okay, I'm gonna keep trying, but, um, I wanted to cite this because this apartment complex is supposed to be considered workforce housing, and that is how much they've raised their rent in two years.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next speaker, next speaker, Mr. Day. Next speaker is John Stop, followed by Jawahir Sharwani, followed by Jeremy Pons, each with two minutes. Mr. Stop, please come forward.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, I just wanted to start up front by saying I completely agree with everything Liliana Bakhtiari said at the top of the meeting about the homelessness issues, and especially when the temperatures get down to freezing and below, it, it does boggle my mind that there isn't a, a big company like Coca-Cola or some, some company like that that could set up a tent with heaters and really help out, even if it's just a few nights. But of course, I'm back here to talk about what happened at Oakland Cemetery, and I was doing my due diligence. I had been in touch with the East Lake Neighborhood President because at first I was upset about the Ike kiosks that got put up at Second and Jose. I was of the opinion that was an intersection too far, and we don't need that type of invasive 24/7 advertisement there, really is a disruptor, in my opinion. But as it seems to be the case with everybody here, and, um, you know, it seems to be the case with everybody here that, uh, you know, y'all wanna sweep that one under the rug. And so if, if nobody in any leadership position can do the right thing and just come out and say, hey, that, that, that type of behavior is wrong, um, you know, lashing out at a high school student who had the courage to ask you about that's wrong. If everybody else is, is content to let that one slip away, then I guess that's just where we are at, at as a society. And, um, you know, I think there's some metaphysical things going on, you know, and when it's Martin Luther King Junior Day, you know, that, that, you know, I tracked the guy down that was there, and so I know, I know what happened.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Next time, I'll, I'll be moving on to something else, so thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jawahir Sharwani, followed by Jeremy Pons and Kendra Williams.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jawahir Sharwani. First, my condolences to the Taylor family. I'm sorry about your loss, Cornelius. Uh, we were, uh, last week, uh, we went to Tortugigas Memory. We were in the middle of the rally, and I found out about it the night before about, um, um, sorry, I found out about, uh, Cornelius', uh, uh, death and the way he died. And I just moved to Georgia, uh, literally, uh, last year, and the second I move, I just been going, I'm a, I'm an activist, uh, for, for human right and everybody right. That's what I have, I just have my voice to share it around, and I would like, you know, I do share it. I just wanna mention that, um, last year, a couple months ago, I was coming back from a meeting at 12 o'clock at night, and I had the honor of meeting this homeless person, his name is Michael, I don't know what's his last name, he asked me for money, I said, I don't have any money, he said, do you, how, could you offer to buy me food? I said, yes, I did, and we start talking until 1 o'clock in the morning outside the gas station. I was not afraid of him, he was not afraid of me, and he said something very, very smart to say. He said, instead of the city, let us to live outside the building, why they don't let us to be inside the building? Why they don't build these housing for us, the building we sleep outside? And why they don't, and, and I didn't figure, I, I was talking to a really smart person, I have to say, I was honored to speak, to speak with him. And he said to me, why people treating us like we're, we're colored? Racism, it does not have a color, it does not have a gender, it does not have a race or whatever, or it's, it's just racism to being racist. And for the mayor to not meet with the, with a miss, with Mrs. Taylor, to, to give him the letter, that's literally, that's racism. If you could just went outside and just greet her, if I'm a mayor, I would greet her. He died, Mr. Cornelius died in the most brutal ways ever, is he was died in a bulldozer, that's his house. If you wanna, you wanna do the sweep, provide them houses, provide them motels, provide them hot water, and do your sweep, use all this money, I know you have all the money, we, this is our tax money, please use it for our people, for our human being, treat them as a human being. Don't treat them as some kind of, they're homeless, this is his home that one destroyed.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is what's his home.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeremy Pons, followed by Kendra Williams, and then Nicola Hines.
Good evening to members of the council. I'm Jeremy Pons, I'm representing the National Office of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, and we take the murder, yes, I said the murder of Cornelius Taylor very seriously because our national office sits on Auburn Avenue, and Old Week Street is the street right directly behind our national office. And as Dr. King was our founder, this is a travesty that the situation had to happen because Dr. King died for poor folk. Dr. King died, Hosea Williams died advocating for the homeless, and we are all one paycheck away from being in this situation. Poverty, aside from gun violence, is one of the highest forms of violence committed on a person in this nation, not just racial injustice, but economic injustice, is a very critical situation in our nation as we continue to build these gigantic buildings in this city that working people can barely afford to live in. But we can't even address the situation of our homeless in our community to displace groups of our homelessness, one area to another. We can't just focus on short-term solutions, we gotta focus on a long-term solution. So as we address the sweeps, we need to address access, we need to address resources. Dr. King said right before he was assassinated, Dr. King assass, Dr. King said, there's nothing new about poverty, but what is new is that we have the techniques and the resources to address poverty. The question is, do we have the will?
Thank you. Next speaker is Kendra Williams, followed by Nicola Hines and Rhonda Frost. Ms. Williams? All right, I don't see Ms. Williams, Ms. Hines? Ms. Hines will be followed by Rhonda Frost, and then James Martin.
Good afternoon, council, and condolences to the Taylor family and friends. My name is Nicola Hines, I am the serving chair for the governing board of the Office of Inspector General and Ethics Office. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak on 25 O dash 1009, which is the new legislation for the legislation for the OIG. As I appreciate the updated legislation that restores the legal voters of Atlanta Fulton County to the Ethics Board, it's still very concerning that it's not part of the Inspector General's Board, and on top, that the seven universities are still eliminated, and now that the Georgia Society of Certified Public Accountants are also eliminated. Their removal jeopardizes the trust and balance that has been foundational to our oversight role. Additionally, the legislation still requires the chair for both boards to be an attorney with five years of investigative experiences. This standard is impractical and unnecessarily restrictive. Multiple legal professionals have confided that most attorneys do not have investigative experience as part of their career path. This requirement recreates a significant barrier to find qualified candidates ignoring broader leadership. Worse, it dictates leadership through legislation, removing the board's autonomy to select the most suitable chair, and further erodes the independence of the governing board. The issue is also combating of by introducing appointees by the mayor's office and full council to the board, which fundamentally shifts it from an independent oversight body to one influenced by political appointments. Independence is not just a principle, it is a foundation of public trust and effectiveness of Office of Inspector Generals and Ethics. This brings me to the question that council president Shipman asked, what problem are these changes solving? Many of these proposed amendments, including the removal of the key nominating entities, restricts the criteria of the board chair, were not part of the task force recommendations. These changes do not align with the task force intent to strengthen the office's independence and transparency. Instead, they weaken the autonomy of the Office of Inspector General, Ethics Office, and Board, making it harder for them to fulfill their mandate addressing fraud, waste, abuse, and ethical compliance. Once again, I just want to let you know that the governing board across this country is the gold standard. There are cities and states that are looking to change their board, like the city of Atlanta, and we are going backwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rhonda Frost.
Mr. President Protam, um, I would like to ask guidance from the Law Department. We have a former elected official that would like to speak to the body. He has a very important meeting, and I would like to ask our courtesy and diligence and guidance from the Law Department on how we can allow him to address the body for two minutes. Law Department.
Good afternoon, Amber A. Robinson, City of Atlanta Department of Law. It would be possible, um, only to vote, to go into committee of the whole when the council can hear from any person that it wishes to hear from, um, in order to have somebody speak outside of the sign-up list and who isn't our current elected official, as those procedures are set forth in the code, uh, that would be the only method of which I'm aware that that could, by which that could occur.
Well, hold on, what, Ms. Boone has the floor, she's asked a question of the Law Department.
Former council member Derek Bozeman.
So, Madam, senior attorney, you've just laid out how that could happen, are there any legal or constitutional concerns you have about that?
Not understanding the purpose of the request to have, um, the person at issue speak, um, there could be an issue raised, um, concerning why it is that would be done to allow someone to speak outside of the usual, um, public comment procedures, if it is nothing more than simply more public comment, though if there is some distinguishing reason that that could help overcome any, um, allegation of discrimination there.
Ms. Boone, still has the floor.
I would like to make a motion to go into the committee on a whole.
For, does a purpose need to be provided? Okay, parliamentarian would like to suggest a purpose?
Purpose for a former elected official to speak to a very important matter.
For how long?
Two minutes.
Okay, that is the motion on the floor, is there a second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Boone, a second by Councilmember Bond, can this be done, I'm sorry, Louis, can this be done on unanimous consent? Okay. Can this be done on unanimous consent, Law Department?
Yes.
Yes.
With any objection? All right, we've got an objection, so we will take a, take the vote. You open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote's closed, eleven yeas, two nays.
Eleven yeas, two nays, um, we are in committee of the whole. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President Protam, I'm gonna explain my vote, it is out, not out of disrespect for, uh, former councilmember Bozeman, it's out of respect for the nineteen people who are waiting to speak, that I feel like they should, are afforded the probability to speak, so that's fine.
You may explain your vote.
Just wanna say, when, if, if former councilmember comes in, he said as long as he, because we know this is a, a, a different type of meeting, because it's on a Thursday, not at 1:00 PM, and he's trying, so, and if he has these type of important things to say that we reach out, I would always be open for that, so I'm explaining my vote for this, because the councilmember truly asked, and I think that he has something to say to us.
Thank you. We are in committee of the whole. Mr. Bozeman? There you are, you would come forward, please, um, and provide your two minutes of public comment.
Let me first of all thank, uh, Mr. President, members of the council.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the extraordinary breach of protocol to allow me to speak, but I stand in this place of Cornelius Taylor because today he can't stand here for himself. Cornelius Taylor is the victim of failed policy that don't see the humanity in those whose index of their income don't rise to the level where they have housing. The tragedy of last week, that it comes on the heels of the King Memorial celebration, was that Cornelius Taylor represented too many people in the city of Atlanta, that some of us would rather sweep away than to deal with the reality. You know, what broke my heart as a former member who sit down here was the policy that said, clean it up and get it out of sight. Who were they doing that for? The one thing we do know, that Cornelius Taylor, after they would have cleaned his house up, the only house he had, that there was no keys that was given to him to go somewhere else the next day. So the policy was, we're gonna take the only thing that he owned, other than his good name and his reputation in the community, and he had a good name and a good reputation, but for the grace of God, some of us, and lo, even some of you, could be in his place. And so we want to examine the policy. I like this mayor, but I would say even to Mayor Dickens, it was a mistake to not meet with the citizens who came to see you about this issue. It was a mistake not to meet with this family, to sit down at the table and reason together. We can't say we're a city that hosts international, uh, FIFA, uh, soccer games and all these great sporting events and all this sport and play, and we can't host people who live right here, even though they may live on the bridge. We're a better city than that.
Thank you, sir.
So I hope that we will take the opportunity to examine our policy, and don't let home partners be the policymaker, nobody elected them to do anything. Partners for Home is not elected to do, do anything, and any policymaking board that does not have people who represent that community, that a single homeless person occupies seat on that board, we elected each one of you all. Take back that power from a unelected board who's making public policy about who get resourcing, who don't, who get housing and who does not, they should not be making those decisions.
Thank you, sir.
If they wanna put that name on a ballot and run, then let them do that, and then we can say they get a chance to pu, punch one of these three buttons up here. Otherwise, they are being, you all are being derelict in your duty to look after the least of lost and left out, that's all I got to say. I am Cornelius Taylor, I am! I am! I am! And I stand today because he can't.
Thank you. Alan, entertain a motion to exit committee of the whole. Motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lewis, we can do this on unanimous consent, is there any objection? Seeing none, we have departed committee of the whole, and we are moving back to Rhonda Frost, James Martin, and Pastor Ann Breedlove.
Good afternoon, all, my name is Rhonda Frost, I'm the former deputy director of Public Affairs for the Atlanta Police Department. I'm here real quick in, in support of the Office of Inspector General. Uh, I want to express my concern, uh, with the proposed recommendation for, that they pull open records requests for documents. I, I know firsthand how that system works and how information is leaked before the request is ever fulfilled. That requirement is counterintuitive to confidentiality, people talk, and that's all I'm gonna say on that matter. I'm also here to express, uh, my story. You might have seen my story on Fox Five News, Roland Martin uncensored, Dr. Rayshard Ritchie's indisputable, or maybe you read the investigative reports and the emails which detail the retaliation and punishment I suffered at the hands of, of Peter Ammon, the mayor's right-hand man, Chief Darren Sheerbaum, Chota Spikes, Public Affairs Director, and other City of Atlanta HR officials. I have over six hundred unredacted emails and an investigative report from the city of Atlanta which exposed corrupt and unlawful actions, yet no, no task force was of Atlanta which exposed corrupt and unlawful actions, yet no, no task force was assigned for my case. In 2022, my daughter Shanae, a law school student at the time, posted a video on Instagram where she analyzed a homicide and challenged APD's homicide charges against Shaka Zulu, the manager of Ludacris. Her video went viral, and my work, Life, became hell. On November 30th, 2022, I was physically locked out of my office without notice. I was investigated for seven months without due process. I was never interviewed. On April 27th, 2023, I sent Mayor Dickens and his team an email asking for help. They did nothing. On May 15th, 2023, HR Director Patrick Pendleton concluded his investigation. He told the HR Commissioner I had done nothing wrong, violated no rules or policies or SOPs, and that I should be put back in my job. Everyone ignored that. I was not notified of the investigation, updated results. I remained home on administrative leave for five more months in the dark. On July 10th, APD Sergeant and HR Director came to my home unannounced and confiscated my ID, work phone, and laptop. They informed me I no longer worked for APD. Instead, I worked for the city of Atlanta in an unnamed role. On September 10th, I was fired under the guise of reduction in force, even though APD had already hired someone for my job. But you want us to believe the OIG task force was formed out of concern for city of employees? I think not, because either they care about all investigations and all employees, or they don't care at all.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. Next up is James Martin, followed by Pastor Anne Breedlove and Jonas Ho.
Yes, James Martin, resident of Berkeley Park, Chairman of Never Heard Planning Unit D. I'm here to speak to you about the OIG legislation. At the last public hearing on this matter, I heard Councilman Shook say that you were all in agreement that something needed to be fixed, and yet I have not heard any member of this council say what that something actually is. I have heard allegations that the Inspector General has violated the Fifth Amendment rights of employees, and yet I have yet to see any example of that. I believe it to be false. OIG has stated that it is false, and yet the administration has repeatedly and publicly made this unfounded accusation. It has been implied that OIG has been abusing its subpoena authority by issuing numerous unjustified subpoenas on fishing expeditions. If so, why have we not been told how many subpoenas have in fact been issued? I filed a public records request. Sixty-one subpoenas have been issued. Forty-eight of them were for financial records. Councilman Vaughn will be glad to hear that zero of them were for medical records, because he expressed concern about that in the last meeting on this matter. Fifty-one of these involve criminal investigations, just so you know. Has OIG been infringing on the rights of employees? Those rights to intimidate witnesses, destroy evidence, and retaliate against whistleblowers? Perhaps, but those are not the sorts of rights that we need to be protecting. In fact, OIG is protecting employees because those acts are infringing upon their rights. The legislation that is before you is predicated on falsehoods. Advancing it would set the city backwards. I urge you to file it instead of, and instead deal with the very real problems that we are, that are now facing the city, which we have heard plenty about today. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Anne Breedlove, followed by Jonas Ho and Letitia Morris.
Greetings, people.
Good afternoon.
I love you all.
We love you back.
I'm really grieving because the Lord is not pleased. I'm grieving because of, we are God's people, and we must know how to treat one another, and we need prayer. That's why I wrote up to tell you, prayer is needed here in Atlanta and all over the world. Are we not looking at California? Are we not looking at California? We can have today, and everything is gone tomorrow. No matter how rich you are, how poor you are, I'm here to stand to let you know, God said, "If my people, who is called by my name, humble themselves and pray, seek Him, turn from your wicked ways, then we will hear from heaven, and God will heal our land." I have fed on these streets for a long time. I fed Cornelius Taylor two days before he died. Week Street is one of my main areas that I feed with Gateway Area and all over the city, and it was a devastation to my spirit and heart to know that this happened to him, because me and him prayed together, we read scriptures, and he always would tell the other children that would try and come upon me, he would say, "Stand back." Such a great young man, respectful. And today, I'm surprised at many of you here, where are your respect? If you put these people in office, have the heart of respect. I'm an elder. I grew up on the farm. We always respect people, no matter how bad they are or good they are. Give respect, people. God bless you, and I love you, and I ask the mayor, as I said on the radio, WAOK, give him a proper burial. And I ask my pastor, Juan Not, to have it at Ebenezer Baptist Church. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next speaker is Jonas Ho, followed by Letitia Morris and Darlene Chaney. Jonas Ho. Letitia Morris. Letitia Morris. All right, Darlene Chaney.
I co-encide my time to Miss Darlene Chaney.
Tolliver, okay. Thank you very much. You have four minutes.
My name is Darlene Chaney. I first want to say thank you to everyone for listening. Thank you to everyone for coming to support, because you didn't have to be here, because to many Cornelius Taylor's life didn't matter. It mattered to me, he was my brother, my big brother, and even saying was is insane, because he should be here. I was awakened to a call, a voicemail, and all the voicemail said was, "Your brother's dead." No other details. My brother suffered from diabetes. So, in my thought, it was, he was deceased from diabetes, not that he was murdered. So, after a phone call or two, and then Googling it, because nobody contacted me to actually tell me, I found that he had been ran over, crushed, to be specific. But I choose not to remember him like that, because his spirit was so big that you couldn't crush it. You couldn't crush it out of him. He was an artist. I remember him as the little boy that played the flute, that wanted to go to school and perform, and I wanted to go too, because I looked up to him. My mom wouldn't let me go. I sat in his lap, I rocked back and forth, cracked my head on the windshield, because he meant that much to me. So I stand here, willing to put my pain to the side to give him the voice that he deserves. I really ask that change is brought about. No one deserves to find their sibling, their father, their mother, their cousin, their grandmother, because this could be anybody. This wouldn't just be me. This is somebody else. It's just that I have the stage right now to plead for him, to pray for him, and to actually beg you all to create change. Cornelius had hopes and dreams, and though many people just see him as a homeless man, he was, again, Cornelius Taylor. He was a brother, a father, a son, an uncle, a cousin. He had people that loved him. He and I had an agreement that he would always reach out, he'd find a way. He was very resourceful. So when I heard that, when I got the voicemail that he was dead, I didn't believe it, but after about two hours and he didn't call me, I knew it was true, because he loved me, because he knew he was loved. He always reciprocated that. You all need to know that this is not just a nobody. He was a somebody to me and a lot of my family and his friends, because he did have friends. Being homeless doesn't mean that nobody cares for you. It means you've fallen on bad times. And again, those times could come for any of us. As they've said before, we could all be one paycheck away. I work every day, I do, but I understand that one misstep could have me outside. We all stood outside today. It was cold. We were layered up, but can you imagine sleeping like that? And then, when you're trying to sleep, somebody just crushes you. You can't imagine it, because it kills you. You don't even know what that feels like. So we have to all put ourselves in his place. That could have been us. That could be us. It might be us, if we don't make a change. So please, guys, let's do something different. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kristen Garrett, followed by Justin Garrett and Tim Franzen. Kristen Garrett. Justin. All right, Mr. Franzen. Afternoon.
I'm, I'm here in support of Cornelius Taylor's family. You know, we came here today to, not with pitchforks or torches, we came here to meet as partners with the mayor and with all y'all, with the assumption that there was collective outrage over what happened on Thursday in advance of the King Day celebration. I continue to have that assumption when looking at y'all, you know? And I think it's a little embarrassing that any activist is going to come in here and use it as an opportunity to grandstand against a council member. That was embarrassing. There's people in here that I disagree with. If you're with us on this issue today, then you're my friend, and I love you. The reality is, is that driving that bulldozer was decades of failed approach when it comes to policy to the issue of ending homelessness, and we've seen a huge increase in the homeless population since COVID, forty percent. And this whack-a-mole, let's push them into the margins, let's make them invisible, let's put spikes on benches approach just doesn't work. It destabilizes an already unstable population. It destroys the few things that folks that are trying to climb out of a hole, get out of quicksand, have. And so, we, we hope today that, one, we can have a moratorium, we could stop the sweeps. Y'all have the power to do that. We could stop the sweeps. And, two, that we could really take some time to develop housing-first approaches that treat folks like human beings. We see other cities doing it and having success, and, and the irony, the kind irony, is that when we do it right, we can actually save the city money and put people in housing. So, thank y'all.
Thank you. Allison Johnson, who will be followed by Monica Johnson and Amanda Leopard.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank y'all, y'all, for being here. I am a bit upset because of what happened this afternoon. We were forbidden from going into our office to present with the family a letter to break bread and have conversation with our mayor. I'm a bit also really disgusted. I've been to this mic several times to talk about the issues that our city has, particularly when it comes to folks being unsheltered, homeless, or people not being able to afford their rent. But today is another horrific time that I'm here to speak about, an issue that should never have come about. There's no doubt that there is a crisis, and particularly a housing crisis here, but there's also no doubt that we don't have all of the answers right now. But we also have to understand that because people are homeless, we don't have the right to deny them their human rights. We don't have the right to make them invisible. Right in the shadows of Ebenezer, someone was killed because they didn't fit the physical identity that we want people to believe who we are. So I come here today begging and asking that we sit down together to create policies that don't create homicides and these types of tragedies. It is a shame that we haven't moved the needle farther than it can be moved with, with the resources that we have, but that's not going to happen if we continue to be in denial. I don't have an adversarial relationship with this mayor's office, but I'm going to rethink that after being shut out today, because I understand it takes all of us to do the work, and if we're going to do the work, we have to own up to our mistakes. The good thing about this is we have the opportunity to change it. I'm a lifelong Episcopan, and in the shadows and in the footprints of our bishop, I come to you, as she did with our president, in asking you for mercy, and ask you, don't forget about those who are unsheltered in our house.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Next speaker is Monica Johnston, followed by Amanda Leopard and Matthew Nursey. Hello.
I don't have much that's different to say from everyone else. I just want to be counted in claiming my disgust for what has happened to Cornelius Taylor and for what the city is doing. I know that there's a lot of pressure, I guess, on the city council to do what normal city councils do, which is give a whole lot of money to developers, continue funding police, cop city, new jails, all that sorts of things, instead of dealing with the root causes of our issues. But I think if you all want to have a clean moral, if you want your heart to be clear of this crime, then we really have to make a change. We cannot continue doing what we've been doing over and over. We can't have this, the solution to the housing crisis be piecemeal. We have to, instead of, for example, we know it costs tens of thousands of dollars to put someone in jail for a year. We could take that money and put them in an apartment. Atlanta has over, I looked at 2024, over sixty-six thousand unused units of, of housing. We can fix these issues. It's really not that difficult, and we have, we can't be in the practice of having to means test and be really stingy with the money that goes to housing, or we throw money to overtime for these cops to tell us that we can't go into the mayor's office for all of this. It's wasteful, and it's, you're defunding the community. The community puts the money in, that pays the salaries, pays for this office, pays for all of this, but we can't get anything back. And it's, it's grotesque, it's disgusting, it's a shame to the legacy of Martin Luther King, and if we want to pretend, not even if we want to, we have the responsibility in Atlanta to do us right, and if you're not going to, stop using Martin Luther King's name.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next speaker is Amanda Leopard. Due to your time, you have four minutes, followed by Matthew Nursey and Derek Chaney. Ms. Leopard.
As a person with lived experience of homelessness in Atlanta, and as a former Atlanta Youth Action Board member for two years and co-author of Atlanta's Community Coordinated Plan to Prevent and End Youth Homelessness, let me be clear, this is not the first death of a person experiencing homelessness whose blood is on your hands. It's one of few that are actually being paid attention to. This is not even the first time that people with lived experience are demanding accountability from the COC because somebody died, even though this is the first time I'm doing so in this space. This time, more people are watching, and you can't sweep it under the rug. The fact of the matter is, you keep letting my community die on your watch, as you let the system inflict extreme violence upon us. Let me also be clear, there is no such thing as a compassionate encampment closure. You say you offer everyone in the encampment the opportunity, priority for permanent supportive housing units, and the alternative is they need to go to your shelters in the meantime, but you don't talk about how we don't have low-barrier shelter system in Atlanta. You don't talk about how we are treated as far from compassionate in this system. A system that often does not treat us as humans. A system that tells people in shelters when we say we have more needs than are being met, that this is maybe not the program for us, and we're free to leave and go somewhere else. Because I want to say justice for Cornelius Taylor, and I also want to say justice for Xavier Simmons, because when you let the organizations you contract ban youth from shelters without a plan for where they can go, and they bring up safety concerns for fear of their safety, and they reach out to outreach workers, but they're still on the streets and they die, their blood is on your hands. I want to say justice for Cornelius Taylor, and I also want to say justice for LaShawn Thompson, because when you arrest my community for sleeping in the parking deck of Georgia Tech and they die while incarcerated, their blood is on your hands. I want to say justice for Cornelius Taylor, but I also want to say justice for Noni Batizko Soko, because when you arrest my community member who had previously been experiencing homelessness after leaving a mental health after leaving a mental health facility for not showing up to court for a misdemeanor offense and they die while incarcerated, their blood is on your hands. I want to ask for justice, I want to call for justice for Cornelius Taylor and justice for the dozens of unsheltered people who have died of hypothermia in metro Atlanta. Instead of working to make sure that this doesn't happen again, your body has made sure that warming shelters cannot operate near schools because you don't want us near you. I want to say justice for Cornelius Taylor and I want to say justice for the 176 people who have died in Fulton and DeKalb County this year alone experiencing homelessness. The streets and halls and jail cells of Atlanta are soaked in our blood. When will you take accountability for the fact that your policies are killing us? Literally. And it's also justice for the queer youth experiencing homelessness, of which over 60% report seriously considering suicide and over 35% attempt suicide. If they die, their blood is on your hands. You can't just remove us from your eyesight so you don't have to confront the crisis you allow. You can't continue to tokenize us when we try to work with you. You can't continue to ignore us when we demand accountability. Justice for Cornelius Taylor and justice for my community.
Thank you. Next speaker is Matthew Nursey, followed by Derek Chaney and Nolan English.
Hello, thank you, my name is Matthew Nursey and I'm with the Housing Justice League. I'm here to say Cornelius Taylor's name and to stand in solidarity with his friends and family. Shame on the mayor and his office and shame on all the cops who are here to prevent the family of Cornelius Taylor from delivering a letter to the mayor's office. This is already an extremely tragic and embarrassing situation and you had an opportunity to do the right thing and failed to do it. You know, as has been said here, a lot of us are just one paycheck away from being unhoused ourselves. In a city where wages are low, y'all have taken away all the public housing decades ago. You have decided in one of the coldest winters that we've seen in a long time that you were going to shut down warming centers. All right? We have rents in the state of Georgia, and some cities have gone up 14% in one year. It's untenable. Corporate landlords are left to run amok and make prices untenable as well. Every time y'all allow an in lieu of fee to let these corporations skirt the amount of affordable housing they were supposed to provide, you exacerbate the problem. So this is on you. And so we're not only just asking for a moratorium and a stop to the sweeps, we are asking for justice so that Cornelius Taylor was not killed in vain. We need affordable and public housing now. We need a lot of it. We need to increase the amount of warming centers that there are. As has been said, the shelters are not a hospitable place and it's not low barrier to entry and there's lots of stringent requirements to be in these shelters. We need to provide people with housing first and then provide them with healthcare, jobs, and anything else they need. Because this situation, again, is caused by you all allowing the corporate elites to take over our city and make it untenable for people to live.
Thank you. Time has expired. Next speaker is Derek Chaney, followed by Nolan English and Lauren Wilson. Derek Chaney.
How y'all doing today?
Hey.
Cornelius is my brother, first and foremost. This whole ordeal was like beyond disrespectful to me. It's me personally, like how this whole thing's been handled period. Us trying to take the letter and now like, even with the police officer, with me, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. I'm big, I'm huge on it. A lot of this is beyond, it was debatable. If necessary precautions are took. My sister took everything that I wanted to say from me. But reality is, that's my first hero. I'm talking about my hero. Same bed, slept together. Boy, I'm talking about like everything. My nephew, he not gonna get to see his dad again. My kids, they was taking away from him. Until y'all standing over shoes. The thing that, it pisses me off when people say, "I feel you." Nah. This pain is, nah, it's not bearable at all. But this is the same dude that, we from Kirkwood, East Atlanta, over in that area. The area in which we grew up in, like I said, my big brother walked me to the park, rebound for me, Cornelius didn't play no basketball. Cornelius artistic, draw, write music, poetry. This is who Cornelius really is. A smile on my mama, a brighten this room up, the light of everything. When I say the light, I really mean the light of everything. Like I say, with me, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. We just need to change, man. Seriously. Don't sit here, like you said, man, don't peel my head and tell me it's rain. Don't put shit on the plate and tell me it's the state. Like, I don't go for it. That's all.
Next speaker is Nolan English, followed by Lauren Wilson. Aska Mahmood.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Lauren Wilson and I'm a third-year political science student at Clark Atlanta University. What happened to Mr. Cornelius Taylor was disgusting. And how the mayor treated his mother is disgraceful and reprehensible. It sends a message about the sentiments the city holds for the most vulnerable members of this community. The city spends billions a year gentrifying traditional black communities. It spends billions investing in tourist attractions and entertainment centers that help nobody who is native to the city of Atlanta and building mega-police training facilities that further disrupt our environment. The least you all can do as decent human beings is support the organizations that have been advocating for the unhoused. But doing your job effectively would mean taking accountability for the negligent and inhumane policy that was passed that allowed this act to take place. The unhoused are people. They have lives and are full of love, as you can see, just like you all. And they deserve to be here. They deserve dignity and respect and to be housed and not be bulldozed in their home. Mr. Taylor's story and what has happened to him and so many other members of his communities who were not able to come out today and say what happened is horrible. And you all have a responsibility to change it and make sure that this does not happen again. It's time to address our morally bankrupt leaders who are mismanaging our tax dollars and investing too much into business and not enough into people. Not everything is about profit. Your job is to protect the people of Atlanta and it's time that you do so.
Aska Mahmood, followed by Arthur Langford. And then the final speaker of the day is Vera Bill.
Good afternoon. My name is Aska Mahmood and I'm here on behalf of the Georgia chapter of the Council on American Relations to offer public comment on the tragic killing of Mr. Cornelius Taylor. Murder by bulldozer. Many of us here are all too familiar with this barbaric phrase because this is exactly what happens when people are dehumanized, be it Cornelius Taylor in Atlanta or Rachel Quarry in Palestine. You cannot sweep away an issue instead of addressing it. All over this country, unhoused, disabled, marginalized people are stigmatized and dehumanized. Because this country has decided to spend billions of dollars on everything: wars, propaganda, tax breaks for the rich, everything except for its own people. Americans are dying from lack of housing and healthcare. Senator Warnock of Ebenezer Baptist Church just voted to send more money to Israel. When Ebenezer Baptist Church holds a requiem for 300 homeless people every year, the state of Georgia runs a surplus of billions of dollars each year but cannot create affordable housing for its own. The city of Atlanta has a duty to its people. Serve your constituents, protect your citizens, build affordable housing. Don't invest in training your police with the IDF that bulldoze Palestinians for sport or you will see deaths like Cornelius' become commonplace here at home like they are in Palestine. Our brother Cornelius Taylor deserved to live and die in dignity. All our people deserve to live and die in dignity. Stop the sweeps.
Yes, sir.
Arthur? You're right, I missed your name. So first we need to hear from Arthur Langford and Vera Bill, if either of them are still here. Okay, then indeed, Mr. Shakir, you, all speaker.
Thank you so much. My name is Ron Shakir. Born in Lloyd, Alabama, on the west side of Tuscaloosa. And never had a night or day that I remember that my mother and father was not in the house. My father was the oldest of 12 children and he had some education, college education. He took out to go north, in that north, in that northern city of New York, Buffalo. Our family stayed in public housing. My best friends, my riding a bike, my marbles, my memories, my school days in elementary was well-remembered in public housing. I knew all my friends' fathers and mothers. They were citizens of the community. We moved to Atlanta, they were public housing. The schools that I went to all had public housing communities. Atlanta lost its way and lost its conscience because what they did to families, mothers and fathers and children, they demolished public housing in the city of Atlanta. And they did it in a way that they thought it was something good and people would accept. Well, they did accept it. It was passed at this city council. That's where the big devil was at in the policies that this city council sat in to close public housing. Well, we can't keep doing wrong when we have people in the streets that's sleeping under bushes and trees and get run over by trucks and city work trucks. The city has lost its way and trafficking the wrong way. And the citizens that had lost their life is the other lives, our family lives, has been disrupted because of the policies of public housing. I'm asking you, as city council officials, to do what you can to reestablish the stable housing in this city and do not overlook a public housing property or housing that can be used to create stable housing and safe housing for the citizens of Atlanta, Georgia, and this city.
Thank you, sir. That concludes public comment. On the agenda, I've been made aware that the Law Department has requested that council enter into an executive session and I've asked the city attorney to explain why.
For purposes of discussing litigation.
One more time.
For purposes of discussing litigation.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session. There's a motion by Councilmember Baktiara, a second by Councilmember Bond. We can do this on unanimous consent of members present. If there is not any objection, seeing none, we will reconvene in committee room.
14 yeas?
14 yeas, zero days. We will reconvene in committee room two.
Entertain a motion to come out of executive session. Motion by Faroki, second by Lewis. We can take that on unanimous consent of members present, which is Winston Faroki, Dozier Juan Shook, Collins, Wes Morland Boone, and Lewis. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine yeas, zero nays. Nine yeas, zero nays. We are back in our regularly scheduled programming, which takes us to the report of the journal.
Good afternoon. Council President Pro Tem and members of council. I, Corinne Lindell, municipal clerk of the City of Atlanta, do hereby certify that the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, January 6, 2025 are true and correct.
Thank you. That takes us to the...
With your time.
Motion to approve. Oh, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Juan, second by Lewis. We can do that on unanimous consent of members present, which is still nine of us.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Journal is adopted. Next up, communications.
First item, Council President Pro Tem is 25C 0005. This is a communication from Daniel Hampton, Chair Audit Committee, submitting the Performance Audit Report, moving Atlanta forward 2024 Annual Review, staff recommendation to refer to Transportation Committee and Committee Development Human Services Committee.
Without objection, let it follow that course.
Next item is 25C 0006. This is a communication from Dr. Kwame Osefe Kalamara, lecturer Spelman College, accepting the appointment to serve as a member of the Commission to Determine an Appropriate Matter in Which to Honor the 150th Anniversary of the First Regiment of U.S. Colored Troops Formed in Atlanta by Bishop Henry McNeil Turner. Staff recommendation to accept and file.
Without objection, let it follow that course.
That concludes the items.
Thank you. Next up, is there any consideration of veto legislation? No, spoiler alert. Is there any unfinished business? No. That takes us to the consent agenda. Before I entertain a motion to approve, are there any items that individuals would like to take off? Said agenda. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve from Councilman Juan, second by Shook. Please open that vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Close close. Ten yeas, zero nays.
Ten yeas, zero nays. The consent agenda is adopted. Mr. Shook.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to move that we send item number 10 on page 7, which is 2501008. It's the baby bond paper to the mayor's office post haste.
It's a motion to send 2501008 to the mayor's office post haste, been seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any objection with doing this on unanimous consent of members present? Seeing none, ten yeas, zero nays. That item is sent post haste. Next up is adoption of the consent agenda, Section 2. Motion to refer, I believe, is the appropriate motion. It's a motion to refer by Juan, second by Shook. Please open that vote.
One moment. The vote is open? Will everyone please vote? The votes close, 11 yeas, zero nays.
11 yeas, zero nays. Those items are referred. That takes us to reports of the standing committees. We will start with the Committee on Counsel. Chair Collins. Please turn your mic on. It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I would like to make a motion to enter into the committee of the whole in order to act on the items on the Committee on Counsel agenda.
This is a motion by Collins, a second by Juan, to move in a committee of the whole. We can do that on unanimous consent of members present. If there is no objection, seeing none, ten yeas, zero nays, we are in committee of the whole.
Great, thank you. So we only have one item on the agenda...
Sorry, 11, 11 yeas, zero nays.
So we only have one item on the agenda to... Excuse me one second. I'm getting used to this. Let me move down. Thank you. Thank you. So we only have one item on the agenda today. This item is what we call a dual referred item coming to us from the Finance Executive Committee in which if anyone from the administration has input on this item, let's see. Excuse me, which is item number 25-0-1009, which is then in ordinance by Councilmembers Howard Shook, Marsha Coria Overstreet, Mary Norwood, Andrea Boone, Liliana Batiari, Dustin Hillis, and Byron Amis, as substituted by the Finance Executive Committee to amend the Charter of the City of Atlanta, the City of Atlanta, Georgia, 1996 Georgia Law 4469, and such adopted under and by virtue of the authority of the Municipal Home Rule Act of 1965. In accordance with the recommendations of the City of Atlanta Temporary Task Force, charged with reviewing the processes and procedures of the Office of Inspector General, the Ethics Office, and the Governing Board of the Office of the Inspector... Governing Office of the Inspector General and the Ethics Office regarding the authority, oversight, and the clarification in respect of roles and responsibility of the Office of Inspector General, the Ethics Office, and to create separate governing boards for the OIG and the Ethics Office and for other purposes. We are going to move... We are forwarding this with no recommendation by the Finance and Executive Committee, but with the request to move in a work... Move forward with the work session. I will pause right here. I think Councilwoman, Councilmember Batiari wanted to say something. My apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to motion to amend, remove my name.
Okay, so we have...
There's a motion to amend, to remove Councilmember Batiari's name as a sponsor, is a second by Councilmember Lewis. We can do that on unanimous consent of members present of now, there are one... 13 of us. Any objection? All right, seeing none, unanimous consent. 13 yeas, zero nays. The item is now amended.
Thank you.
Yes, so the... Yep, so the motion, thank you for the motion to amend, removing your name from this legislation. And so I will now make a motion to hold the item.
Motion to hold has been made by Councilmember Collins, second by Councilmember Batiari. Any discussion?
So yes, I would like to go ahead and at least open the discussion up in terms of holding this legislation... Holding this legislation to allow... To allow city council the opportunity to engage in a work session that will, in fact, inform us on the portions of this legislation that are still of issue and are also being debated across multiple entities. It has been clear from the... From feedback from not only the Finance and Executive Committee, but also from the Committee of the Whole and also from council and our constituents, the need to really discuss more of those key issues. What I do want to make clear in the legislation is that there are a lot of portions of this legislation that all entities have agreed upon. And when I say entities, I am referring to the City of Atlanta, the Atlanta City Council, and the Office of Inspector General and the Ethics Office. But there are some key issues that we do need to, in fact, enter into a work session to understand more so that we can get this legislation to a point where the business of the city and what we've been charged to do can continue. Mr. President Pro Tem, I would like to open it up for any discussion, but also invite anyone from the administration that has input on this item. And let us...
So we've got, yes, we've got a motion to hold before us. Mr. Lewis, would you like to speak to that motion? Okay. That is, not going to make any comments. Ms. Batiari, any discussion on the motion to hold?
Rashida Davis. When have you become Rashida Davis?
I want to also clarify for anyone watching, this is not Rashida Davis. This is Chairwoman Ishay Collins. But I also just wanted to... I appreciate this. I think the work session is absolutely necessary. But most importantly, I just wanted to commend Chairwoman Collins on her leading her first meeting and leading on this topic. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion to hold?
One question was, do we have a date for the work session yet?
We don't have a date yet. We will be, we will be, you know, getting with you all in terms of a date, and we're hoping that it will be soon. So please be on the... Please go look out for communication on that date. The goal is to have that work session within the next, at least the next week, to 10, seven to 10, 10 business days for sure. But also just understanding that that work session will be led by Atlanta City Council with the Office of Inspector General, our Law Department, and also our Ethics Office. And so we will be sharing that agenda format as well. And also just want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Shook. He and I will be co-chairing that work session along with our amazing city staff. So thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify for my... Because my constituents have had a lot of questions. Absolutely, a work session will be held. We're just waiting on the date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis.
Similar to Councilmember Batiari, I've been bombarded with questions from my constituents and folks who want to hear my voice on this, actually. So my voice was similar to this, making sure we can hold it. I think the seven-day turnaround and not knowing the date today would be an issue to my constituents. Because I think you just said that you want to get it done within the next seven days.
Next seven to 10 business days. We're looking at the regular working session day, which will be next Thursday, January 30. But before I stepped out and put that out there, I wanted to confer with all my colleagues to make sure that that's, that everyone is available. I do think it's important for us to ensure that many, as many, that the majority of us is able to be present, as we've done a lot of work in this space. And so projected to look at sometime within the next seven to 10 days, so.
And the thing that... Because I know a lot of my constituents are watching this, particularly on the south side of the City of Atlanta. And what they, the seven to 10-day turnaround, they would want us to open it up. So I would want to, want to make sure I say that seven to 10-day turnaround, trying to get some scheduling purposes. I would want to give folks more of a note, more notice. I think that this is such a huge change to the City of Atlanta. I think we have to be as intentional as possible about this. And I don't, I don't want to rush it. Similar to us when we voted last week in the first council meeting for our... For pay city council salaries to go into effect under the next council. I would even be okay with us taking our time for this and whatever we do vote on, going into effect under the next administration, not this one. So I just wanted to make sure that my thoughts were out there and so folks could actually hear it. But the seven to 10-day turnaround, to me, is not enough notice to get out to the citizens of Atlanta so they can be in tune and knowing what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion to hold? Seeing none, please open that vote.
The vote is open? Oh, yes, I'm good, thank you. The votes close, 13 yeas, zero nays.
Mr. Shook, how would you like your vote recorded? Mr. Shook, how would you like your vote recorded? Holding the paper.
Yes.
Well, just to hold.
Shook is an aye, 14 yeas, zero nays. That item is held. I'll entertain a motion to come out of committee of the whole. So moved by... You're done, right?
Yes. Wait, wait, wait. No, no, we're not. No, we're not.
Okay, let's make...
Sorry, sorry.
It's all good.
Yes, we do have one, we do have one other matter that has been held as well. We have nothing coming off of held this week, but 24-0-1684 was amended at the last meeting to reflect the following salary adjustments for the mayor, city council president, and members of the council for the terms of office beginning in 2026. Respectfully, the amendment states that the mayor will earn a salary of $236,865. Council president earns a salary of $133,250. And members of council earn a salary of $99,930. We will continue to hold this paper to allow for the appropriate advertising period pursuant to Section 2-306A2 of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinance, which is to run consecutively for three weeks. But also want to acknowledge that the salary, that this proposed salary is a reduction... Excuse me, is a reduction from the initial salaries as proposed based on our last meeting.
Thank you for that announcement. Ms. Norwood?
Yes, I just wanted to see if we could finalize the date for the work session before we come out of committee of the whole for the Committee on Counsel.
Mr. Shook?
Have a date.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty confident we can have it announced by the end of the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, so we'll, so Councilman Shook and I will work on that for you, Councilman Norwood, and get that to you. Yes.
Any other comments? I will entertain a motion to exit committee of the whole.
Not yet. Sorry, sir. I have a couple more things. There isn't any walk-in legislation nor requested items, but wanting to also, colleagues plan to adopt our 2025 goals and objectives at our next meeting, which will be on February 17. And so, of course, committee members, please send your recommendations to Mr. Overton, and we'll collect, he'll collect our suggestions. There are some additional vacancies that we will, that we will talk about, but we can focus on that at our next committee, at our next Committee on Counsel meeting. Mr. Overton, do we have any additional business today? Great, thank you so much. You've been amazing. And so, Mr. President?
I will entertain a motion to exit committee of the whole. Motion by Juan, second by Lewis. We can do this on unanimous consent of members present. I believe we're back up to 14 strong on the dais. So 14 yeas, zero nays. We are out of committee of the whole. I will now entertain a motion to ratify the actions taken in committee of the whole. Motion by Batiari, second by Juan. We can do this on unanimous consent of members present, of which there are, without objection. Seeing none, 14 yeas, zero nays. We have ratified the action that we took in committee of the whole.
Great, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next up is the zoning committee, which I chair, but I have asked Councilmember Faroki if he would come and deliver the report on the absence of the chair and the vice chair.
Mr. Pro Pro Tim and Mr. Chair. The zoning committee report has 16 ordinances for second read, four of which are to adopt as amended, 12 of which are to refer to ZRB and zoning, and will have eight ordinances for first read. Always a good chance to run to the restroom if you see fit. First, the ordinances for second read to be adopted as amended. I'll read them collectively. 2401493, case number Z2458, location 425 Chapel Road Northwest. The ordinances to rezone from PDMUBL, Plan Development Mixed Use Spell Line Overlay to Plan Development Mixed Use Spell Line Overlay for a major site plan amendment. 2401646, case number U2431. 3190 Roswell Road Northwest. The ordinances for a special use permit for an outdoor sales area. 2401649, case number U24341544 Pete Monade Avenue Northeast. The ordinances for a special use permit for outdoor parking, excuse me, outdoor dining at eating and drinking establishments when any part of such use is located within 1,000 feet of a property that is zoned as a residential property. And 2401650, case number U24351881 Howell Mill Road Northwest. The ordinances for a special use permit for a non-residential use or establishment exceeding 7,500 square feet in area in which alcoholic beverages are sold or consumed on the premises. The recommendation coming out of committee is to adopt as amended. Recommendation of coming, coming out of committee is to adopt as amended. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open the vote on those three items.
The vote is open?
Four. Four items.